See Commissioner Kilkup in. There we go. Okay. Seem we have a quorum. We call the August 5th, 2024 Planning Commission to Order. It's 7:02 PM. And I'm the Chair, Luke Muziak, doing the roll call, Vice Chair.
President.
Mr. Kilkup. See there, I didn't hear you. You're in mute? Okay, she's here. We can't, we can't, you can hear us, right? Okay. Commissioner Crone?
Present.
And Commissioner Lambert? Is absent. Okay. Commissioner Kilkup, if you've got something important to say, you're gonna have to get your mic squared away. Can you unmute yourself, Commissioner Kilkup?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, that'll do it.
Okay.
We've got everybody. And other than Commissioner Lambert and a vacant position. Okay, are there? Any members who wish to give public comment? For items not on the agenda? See, none. Move on to the next one. I understand we have a change to the agenda. Okay. So. I move that we approve the amended agenda to include as the third agenda item, the finishing of the historic training. That'll be number three. And we finished that video. And so I move that we approve the amended agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And move on to the Council Liaison Report? Yeah, we have Steve, Commissioner Smith, did I miss him? Yeah, Commissioner Smith is now joined.
Yes, all right.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have two things. The first one is we had a presentation and Q and A with. Huge sound energy for an electric vehicle curbside charging station program that they have. Where if there are poles that have power that is accessible to them, generally speaking, PSC power poles, but potentially could be other things. Then they have a program where they can attach. Essentially, a charging station up high, so it's a little bit harder to vandalize and those kinds of things. And, excuse me. Yeah. Push a button or something like that, and then the charging cord descends slowly, doesn't drop on your head. I made sure it descends, and then you're able to take that and charge up your vehicle. And so we haven't decided, yes, we are going to do that, and these are the exact locations. We're not at that point. It was just sort of like, hey, here's a program. Are you guys interested? And the council was very favorable toward the idea. So they have a whole process that they go through for determining where exactly they would go, if it's feasible for a particular city or area in, in the region, where they talk to stakeholders and community members, et cetera, et cetera. So when I first started about it, my first thought was, oh, that'd be great for, say, downtown, where we have some poles like that that are available. You got people who come down to visit the town, they charge up their vehicle, go visit some of our local restaurants and other kinds of. Commercial activities, and then they can head out on their way. It could also be used in residential, so there's nothing against that. Just, that was my first thought. So it could be that there are some areas that would be close to residential that could work. They're gonna have a whole process where they're gonna figure out where it would be best. So that's pretty exciting. It also is no cost to the city. They pretty much cover it other than just the charge or the cost of actually charging the vehicle. But they do the installation, all those things, which is pretty great. The other thing I wanted to mention is Resolution 1693, which I mentioned, I believe, a couple of weeks ago, few weeks ago, when last we met. Saying that the council almost adopted this resolution, but we had just a few concerns, so we gave it another turn of the crank, and we passed it at our last meeting. And what it does is it clarifies the intent of the council with regard to the CIP and the Community Center Expansion. That when we pushed out the timing for the Community Center Expansion for a year. The intent wasn't to say, well, we're just gonna kick it down the road, and we'll maybe revisit it then, which could be an interpretation that someone could have had just at face value. But this resolution clarifies what we meant by that was, as soon as we have the funding available, we'll go, and we don't see that happening in the immediate future, unless someone wants to write a check for several million dollars, it's not gonna happen tomorrow. So, but we do have specific funding opportunities that are named in the resolution, like the King County Aquatics Grant, for example. If we get that one and maybe one or two other funding sources from either state or local agencies or other grant opportunities. Then, yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and go. We've got the plans all drafted up. It is shovel ready. We just need a few more millions. So that was it for my update. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Let me just do a quick round robin. Vice Chair Testman, any questions?
None for me this week. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, my, my question, again, probably would have been part of my items at the end of the meeting, but the, the backups with the new lane revisions at Highway 18 are pretty insane, and now I think it's even impacting, you know, people heading onto I-90 east, or sorry, westbound towards Seattle with multiple cars blocking. I've noticed lots, I know this is not a new topic, but lots of unsafe maneuvers, disgruntled drivers. It makes me want to avoid the area entirely. Unfortunately, I have to go down to Kent at that time of night, so I get to endure that, but it, it looks like a, it is some sort of an accident or incident waiting to happen. And I don't know what can be done in terms of restriping or monitoring, but it does seem like there'd be lots of opportunities to issue tickets. I know that gets to be State Patrol jurisdiction, once you get get down towards the intersection, but I'm sure this is something the city is looking at and concerned about, and hopefully relaying thoughts to the appropriate jurisdictions, Wash Dot and others, of ways to work around this throughout the construction period.
Yeah, certainly a question that I can field to Parks and Public Works and see, hey, what are you guys thinking about how that street is interfacing with Snoqualmie Parkway? Or that segment is interfacing with Snoqualmie Parkway? You know, what kind of concerns do staff have about it? Since they're the experts in the field, you know, they, they know how to look at traffic patterns and you know, critically assess safety concerns and those kinds of things. So I don't wanna just speak off the cuff and go, yes, it's dangerous, you know? I'm not qualified to make that assessment, but um, yeah, so I could definitely field that question to them, and, and they may, may have questions or concerns that they can bring to, to the state. So thanks for that. And yeah, it's definitely a concern. I've always had it ever since, you know, I've lived in the area, coming home from Bellevue. You know, when I have to get off at Snoqualmie Parkway, there's that big long line in that far right lane, and I'm always just worried that someone's gonna jump out at the wrong moment, not seeing me coming up behind them. But, but that's always been the case, and hopefully that project is getting close to the end. Last time I checked, it was still expected to be completed by the end of the year. They've been making massive progress over the last couple of months. They've got sections paved now, so I have high hopes that this is a temporary issue, but, but again, yeah, I'll forward the concern to Parks and Public Works.
Yeah, and the tickets I think you're referring to are like a left turner blocking traffic, and so it just cascades backwards and we've seen people hang out the window and give sign language at the truckers doing that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it, that's, that's honestly, that's my concern, is that one day that's going to be a gun and not a finger, honestly. Just with how crazy our society is, it's going to happen.
It's, yeah. Okay.
Don't wanna be on the business end of that.
Good, yeah. Okay, anything else, Commissioner Smith? Mr. Kilkup?
Nothing for me.
Mr. Crone?
Nothing for me. Thanks.
Okay. I'm good too. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'll move on to approval of the minutes dated June 15th. I move that we approve the minutes dated June 15th, 2024, as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And it's approved. And then we move on to item number two, Historic Downtown Retail District Overlay Code Amendments.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Levens. I'm a land use planner. Coming back to you tonight to discuss the amendments to the retail district requirements and the mixed-use Snoqualmie Ridge mixed-use final plan. As you'll recall, over the course of this year, we've come to the Planning Commission to discuss this several times. And it relates specifically to requirements for storefronts facing Railroad Avenue and Center Boulevard in Snoqualmie Ridge. So you may remember that currently 75% of the ground floor spaces, storefronts facing Railroad Avenue within the Historic District Overlay are required to be retail uses as defined by the municipal code. As we have, as this has progressed through various discussions, the most recent one being on May 20th with the Planning Commission. The language has evolved such that the requirement is proposed to be 90% of the storefronts within the downtown retail overlay zone along Railroad Boulevard, Railroad Boulevard, and Falls Avenue would be required to be a retail use as defined by the code. And 90% of the ground floor tenant spaces facing Center Boulevard Southeast in the Snoqualmie Ridge Neighborhood Center would be required to be retail uses. Both of these locations would be eligible for a retail waiver, a waiver from that retail use requirement after a period of 365 days of vacancy. If the property owner or landlord could demonstrate that they had made a good faith effort to advertise the retail vacancy as, as defined by the code. So we also discussed expanding the retail district downtown to Falls Avenue, and so I would like to go ahead and show the Planning Commission that what staff has proposed there. And just as a reminder, again, we also implemented some language based on Commissioner feedback, requiring that windows and ground floor retail spaces not obscure their windows 100% of the way with either a tint or signage or curtains of some nature that would block a pedestrian's view into that retail space. So I'd like to kind of discuss what we've done since that last meeting in May. Staff has as directed by the commission, staff reached out to the property owners of all parcels that are currently subject to retail use requirements, as well as those that we have proposed to add the requirement to. So those parcels are as follows. If you'll go to page in the document, in your pocket, it's page 18. So, so this is a map of the current versus the proposed extent of the retail use or the Historic Retail Overlay Zone downtown. So the black line represents where the regulations currently apply. The orange, the white line with the orange fill represents where staff is recommending the boundary be modified to. So you'll notice that in the northern portion of the district, the regulations have been revised to remove these parcels. That's because those parcels are not zoned for commercial use. They are owned by the city and are incorporated into the city's river trail parks planning effort. So there will, there will be no retail uses in perpetuity on those parcels, so we are proposing to remove them. And you can see that we have proposed to expand the district along Falls Avenue here for parcels with storefronts facing Falls Avenue that are currently located within the Sno, the Historic District Overlay Zone as designated by the zoning map, which I have that here. So you can see this black line. The proposed extent of the retail use requirement expansion would apply to parcels that are only within the existing historic district. In Snoqualmie Ridge, this, we have the same graphic prepared for you. The black boxes depict to the current extent, which are storefronts, ground floor storefronts that are facing three intersections along Center Boulevard Southeast. As directed by the Planning Commission, we have proposed to incorporate all parcels facing all parcels with storefronts facing Center Boulevard Southeast in the Snoqualmie Ridge Neighborhood Center. One aspect of the changes that we are proposing that was not discussed at the last Planning Commission meeting is the applicability of the BR1 zone. So in the zoning code. The BR1 zone is described as a district that contains all properties located within the Historic District Retail Overlay Zone and is intended for shopping and dining in a pedestrian-oriented environment. So something that I would like to bring to the commission's attention for their discussion is that if the Falls Avenue parcels are incorporated into the retail the retail overlay zone, but they are not rezoned BR1, that would be inconsistent with the purpose statement of this zone that is defined in the municipal code. So staff is suggesting that as part of this recommendation, the Planning Commission recommend that these parcels that are currently zoned BR2, which is the dark red, be rezoned to BR1 to be consistent with the parcels that are currently located within the Historic District Retail Overlay Zone, which you can see here are these bright red parcels. So in order to ensure that, that, that these changes, the incorporation of Falls Avenue into the retail overlay zone does not create an inconsistency, either the parcels on Falls Avenue will need to be rezoned or the purpose statement within the municipal code will need to be revised. We have suggested that the parcels be rezoned, as that seems to be most consistent with the intent of this effort.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, would you like a formalized recommendation from the Plan Commission this time?
And it is the director's suggestion that it would be a lot easier to change the purpose statement, perhaps to be more flexible than to do a rezone. So ultimately, we would leave that, I guess, up to the commission's recommendation, but yes, as part of this would be incorporated, whatever the outcome, it would be incorporated into the commission, Planning Commission's recommendation to City Council.
Okay, so could you go back to definitions of BR1 and BR2?
Yeah.
Because I was ready to.
So here we have BR1 and BR2.
Okay, so you were originally saying we could reason on BR2, BR1, and basically what the staff has recommended is that we change the purpose statement to include BR2, BR1, rather than rezon. Is that accurate?
Yes, essentially revising the language of this BR1 purpose statement to be less restrictive and to allow it to apply to the Falls Avenue parcels without creating an inconsistency between the code and what we're proposing tonight. We don't have that language prepared for you tonight, but because there is still a public hearing necessary for these changes, it's something that would be coming at that next public hearing.
And rezoning from BR2 to BR1 is problematic, just difficult to do? What's the, very difficult to do? So it's better to change the descriptions?
It, it would be a relatively lighter lift to change the description. In practice, the difference might not be significant, because all of these parcels that we're incorporating into the retail overlay zone will be subject to the retail use requirement, so it will be restricted to retail uses that are defined in the code. The purpose of this reconciliation is really just to make sure our actions don't create inconsistencies.
Okay, do you need a formal motion for a recommendation from the Plan Commission to proceed with that?
I think just direction, commission direction would be good, and we can present those changes to you in a strike through at the public hearing for the changes.
Okay, well, let's just pause for commentary. I've got, I see some hands up. So let me go around, and again, the proposals, I understand it, is to make sure that we're change the description of BR1 and BR2 for consistency and to enable the retail 90% that we had recommended, 365 days, right?
Yes, that's the, that's the purpose of the, either the language change or the rezone. So the language change would just because this, because currently the code defines the BR1 zone as it states that it contains all of the parcels in the downtown Historic District Retail Overlay Zone. But when we incorporate the Falls Avenue parcels, that would no longer be true. So we would be proposing language that just makes this a little less restrictive in a way that doesn't.
So let me, let me hear from the Plan Commission. Vice Chair Testman?
Yes, thank you. So I, I know, I acknowledge, you said the language is still to be sussed out. I will say that's important, because when you say less restrictive, I think based off of how the conversation has unfolded, I think you're saying less restrictive in that it will incorporate Falls Avenue. However, my question, my concern would be would the proposed language be less restrictive in terms of the purpose, right? And what I mean there is current BR1 says is intended for shopping and dining in a pedestrian-oriented environment. So I guess first question for this proposed language that needs to be developed, do you see that portion changing?
The, no, the portion that I would see changing would just be really this all. I think that we would attempt to modify this in a way that removes the all properties located within the Historic District Retail Overlay Zone, because that's no longer going to be true. So maybe it could say the majority, or it could just be revised to say something along the lines of the BR1 sub-district is intended to comprise Snoqualmie's retail commercial core.
And. But the, the focus will be on local, on the geographical boundaries.
Yes, it's not, the intent would not be to modify this second part. We're talking about the purpose of the zone.
Okay, and so related, but the, the, the portion, so basically the properties that abut the river on Falls Avenue, yes, to the, on the northeast parcels there. Uh huh. Yeah, so looking at, yeah, exactly. So those you said are currently BR2, and so my question is because there are homes there. So we change that to BR1, and what, that's really only activated once a property owner sells?
The, those are, because they're already in a retail, a commercial zone, they're technically already non-conforming uses. So those would be subject to those are just subject to the city's non-conforming use code, but typically and I mean, yeah, just looking at this, there's really not a lot of retail uses that are allowed in one, but not the other. There, for the most part, residential, I'm sorry, residential uses one, but not the other. For the most part, residential uses aren't allowed in either zone. So as long as that use was continued, I mean, like a property owner could theoretically, my understanding is sell the house to another residential user, but if that was at one point converted to a business, it would probably not be allowed to convert back to a residence.
Okay, so said another way, with this, if, with this code change in place, does that do anything substantial to incentivize the development of bona fide retail businesses there in place of private dwellings?
I would say there's not really a difference, because in both instances, private dwellings can't be developed on those parcels, like beyond what they are now, really. Commercial, residential uses to the extent they're allowed will also be allowed or disallowed under either the BR1 or the BR2 zone. And I'd have to double check exactly what the use table says to be 100% sure, but that's my understanding.
Okay, okay, thanks. I yield to Commissioner Kilkup. Yes, Commissioner Kilkup?
First, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I second the questions about just clarifications on what exactly we're talking in the language change. I think that's important. And I guess I would be, I'll, I'll be interested to see what language is proposed there. I do definitely want the second half to remain as the intent. But I do have concern with removing all properties if that loosens that BR1 to not all those buildings within that zone. So that's the concern that I have there. Also, if you could go back to the map. I liked, or I agree with the modification of the, the new commercial zone. The question I have is, we're looking at the properties that are the darker reddish brown on Falls Avenue, right? What about the properties that are on Maple that are that same dark, dark red? Are those included in what we're discussing here or not?
Those are not going, are not currently proposed to be incorporated into the retail district, but they are zoned BR2. So it would not, they, these, to be clear, these dark brown parcels won't really be affected by any language changes we're discussing right now, since we're talking about the BR1. Language changes we're discussing right now, since we're talking about the BR one zone. It's these bright red parcels along railroad and I this, this is the only place in the city that this zoning designation occurs. And so. Revising that language would not remove applicability to these bright red parcels. It would simply allow these dark brown parcels that we've been discussing. Along falls to be incorporated into the retail district without creating an inconsistency in the zoning code.
So the properties that are on Falls Avenue Southeast will still remain BR two. Or will they be changed to BR one?
They would remain BR two under the current thinking.
Okay. I believe that is my only question. Or my questions, plural. Until we see that proposed language and yeah.
Okay, and yeah, the I mean, the use tables, they're very substantially similar. It's the and this, to be clear, this purpose statement, we will bring that language forward for your review. This purpose statement. At the risk of sounding. Silly there, it's kind of squishy, it's kind of theoretical, like this is how the code supposed to be applied language. The actual meat and potatoes is really going to be the use table, so this. We're not proposing any changes as part of that to this use table or the language that's being proposed tonight for the retail requirements.
Okay, I'm going to finish the round and then I'll get back to you, Vice Chair Tesman. Chris Smith, do you have any questions, comments?
I think been pretty well covered, but I can't give anything else that I had to ask here. Thank you.
Mr. Chrome.
Just one question about the potential inconsistency. Is it? Is it just that it wouldn't strictly apply in that using the word all to the BR two zone there on Falls?
That's right. Yeah, if we say, you know, if we are saying that the BR one zone in one portion of the code, we're saying the BR one zone applies. To all parcels in the retail district, but then. We're incorporating part BR two parcels into the retail district, and then there's just a little bit of inconsistency.
Okay, okay, thanks. I appreciate that. Then I'm just looking forward to the language.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. The Vice Chair Tesman.
Yes, sorry. One other question, if we can go back to the map. Yes, thank you. I guess what's the rationale behind doing this change for those? For those properties along the river and not the properties along Maple?
So throughout the course of these discussions. The commission, we have understood the commission's recommendation or desire was for staff to just study the. Incorporation of these parcels along falls. Into the historic retail district overlay zone. And so because of that, we have not, we have not examined how these parcels along Maple could be incorporated into the. Historic retail overlay zone. That's it's. Currently there, the zoning, this BR two zoning designation occurs in both places, but. Just I I would imagine because this is more of a contiguous downtown like between railroad and Falls Avenue. That could be one reason that. The recommendation was to to just study the Falls Avenue parcels.
Yeah, I mean, maybe I'm a minority, but the thought in my mind is if we still need to get the language written. And this is really just to avoid, you know, disconnects in the code or whatever. I feel like we have the opportunity to just. Look at it all and if it changes or merited, make them in one fell swoop or whatever. But and I hear you, you know, you've got the. The green space separating those those parcels on Maple versus. The Falls Avenue ones, but for example, like why wouldn't you include essentially behind the true value hardware store? Right there on a river, maybe? I don't know, right? So. I just I again, maybe I'm a minority, but if we got to get the language written anyway. And this is an, I think this is an opportunity to. Maybe at least in some small way, lay the groundwork to. Expanding. The the commercial footprint in downtown Snoqualmy, I think I think that's worth doing. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on that.
I'm in agreement. I would like to see the BR two all is BR one while we're looking at it.
I mean, if you're going to have the language applied to BR two, wouldn't it actually apply to? The ones on Maple Avenue as well?
It could certainly be written that way if that was the. The desire of the planning commission or the city council.
Yeah, if they're not residences. Yeah, they should be under that. And it's all in the walking area, right? Between the train station and where we want people to to go and be tourists and spend money.
And and we know we need to broaden the tax base and and yet we have very few concrete. Opportunities to do so. This is potentially the foundation for one.
Yeah, agreed, agreed. Were you showing this map? What did you want to show?
This is just the proposed, I think that. The hardware store may have been mentioned if I'm.
Yeah.
There's another one I that just.
And so that parcel to the. North east of it, right there on the corner is also currently BR two. I don't know if that's a house that currently occupies. I know there are houses as you make that corner. And again, not to get in the weeds here. Yeah, 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 exactly. So those first two, those first two parcels on park. Are. BR two right now.
Yeah, before you mentioned it was such a heavy lift. I was Johnny down that. The recommendation would be to basically change BR two to BR one. But since can't do that, if we could change the language to make it pedestrian friendly retail consistent. For basically BR two and BR one to be consistent, I think that would be helpful. You know, if you can't do the rezoning. Because that's all in the pedestrian. Retail area that. That we like to bring folks, yeah, we're all attracted things there.
Yeah.
It's not just on the right side of the.
Well, well, for case in point, right? I I believe is the woodman. Would the woodman get? Snagged up if we changed the properties on Maple to BR one? Do I have, am I oriented properly?
I think so. I think it's would have been there.
Yeah. And so if we didn't make that change, wouldn't it stay BR two? And you know, the three homes or whatever on Falls would go to BR one. If I'm right, no.
Yeah, until it's right. So guys, the planet commission is leaning pretty heavy to including BR two, including those aligned at Maple Avenue. Into a BR one type of language, if you can't resume on it.
So the suggestion is to. More or less apply the BR one. So I guess I would just. Are we? Are we still discussing mainly the purpose, this, the purpose statements? The, based on what I'm hearing, it sounds like.
Oh, no, those are home.
It sounds like maybe the. Thinking is that we're you're leaning towards. Like applying the BR one requirements also to the BR two zone.
Right, but let's let's take a step back. So first we said. The economic draft commission says, look, we want this to be ninety percent retail, retail pedestrian area, much like the definition you have there for BR one. We said, yes, and oh, by the way, would like it to be two hundred and sixty five days, not hundred twenty or hundred eight. And we said, let's apply that to Center Street as as aside, just put that aside. So now we're looking at what we want to be retailing. Pedestrian friendly, and we're like, you're right there. I mean, the B two stuff, BR two stuff that you've got designated. You know, don't just take the stuff on the right side of our road, take the stuff on the left side, Maple. And just apply the same thing so that we increase the retail pedestrian friendly area. So that's that's what incredibly wrong. That's the plan commission is very much wanting to have language to incorporate that.
So the. It sounds like you're saying like in this, with this map, you would want to incorporate this area here. Also into the proposed, like to incorporate it into the retail district overlay. So it would be subject to all those use requirements.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is previously been designated as BR two anyway.
Yeah, it's still, yeah, and it would can, under just that modification would continue to be zoned BR two, but would be subject to. Retail use requirements that we've been.
For you, then you've got all of the R two, you just grabbed all of the R two rather than. Just on this side of the road and not that side, just grab all the R two and say it applies there as well.
That's definitely something that we, I mean, yeah, I mean, the with these purpose statements that would I can. We can develop some language that would eliminate any inconsistencies and we can expand the retail district. To include the BR two parcels along Maple, if that's the commission's. Intent.
Yes, but rather than put it that way, all of BR two should be under that auspice. Why don't we just say that? And then it's then it's very consistent.
Just just to clarify, so what I'm hearing is that in that in that case, if it's everything that's BR one and BR two. Was in the retail overlay, it would have a ninety percent.
Right.
Requirement.
Right.
Knowing that there are some parcels that would automatically default to take up that ten percent. Like City Hall is is BR two. I'm the Woodman. Moki Joe's.
Yeah. I mean, that's that's retail, yeah.
Yeah.
City Hall, obviously not.
We may, we may push our our threshold, we haven't even crunched the numbers to see if those three properties would. You know, if there are any other businesses.
You could use exam, if language to exempt city offices, I mean, the city hall or something, I mean, but. Again, you've got, you've got BR two outline there, why not? And you're saying just do the right side, why not do the rest of it? And if you need to exempt City Hall. Except City Hall.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, and and really, I don't see. Well, okay, yeah, certainly if we took a simplified approach of if it's BR two, maybe to BR one, yeah, then that's problematic. But if we just write the language, because because like you said, City Hall, right? So you could either disexempt it or it stays BR two and we write the language a little bit more stringently. So that we're specifying. Maple. Over to the river, you know? There's something else I was gonna say, shucks.
Yeah.
I forgot.
Commissioner, hold your thought, Vice Chair, just Christian Koka.
I just wanted to clarify, based on what committee director just said on, wouldn't this apply to? Each individual parcel at ninety percent facing the street front. Rather than a collective of the group. That just confused me a little bit.
Current, so as currently drafted, the language applies to storefronts, so. It would apply to each storefront facing the road. On the ground floor. Within the retail district overlay zone.
Okay. And does the language, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't just can't remember it. Does it call out transparency? Specifically?
Yeah, so I believe that was one of your concerns as part of in May, in May, when we met. And so. When we had discussed it, it was specifically on Snoqualmy Ridge, however, this is language we could also incorporate into the. Downtown historic district. Retail overlay zone, but we've included language that says no more than fifty percent of the ground floor windows of a retail tenant space. Facing Center Boulevard can be covered with opaque material. And this fifty percent and in general, the language is something that we would hope to get your feedback on. But as a starting point, we thought fifty percent could be a reasonable. Amount to allow for signage or curtains or sun shades or. Things of that nature.
I'd probably go higher if you're actually asking my opinion. Yeah, I mean, the the idea here is not to make it impossible on businesses, but really to create a connection point between pedestrians and small businesses. So that there's eyes on the street and street on the shops and so. Yeah, somewhere. Maybe north of fifty percent or closer to maybe seventy or seventy five percent would probably what I would like to see. And certainly you can tell me if that's outrageous, if if there is some sort of situation where that does not work for a a business. I believe that they could. Ask for a variance. But it makes the intent pretty clear.
Yeah, yeah, we don't have to look like. You know. Some modernist nightmare, right? You'll be able to see in there.
Right, so I just wanted to make sure touching on that last, this last. Discussion item regarding the. The intent, it's too, so we're, we will come back to you and we will basically come back with language. That indicates in the municipal code, the historic district would apply to all parcels in the BR one and the BR two zone. That would incorporate these parcels along Maple. And it would also incorporate City Hall, will include some language exempting city facilities, city owned facilities. And we will increase the number, the transparency requirement to. To seventy percent. So I guess.
Why is, why do we have to request that? I mean, when I retail. One opaque, I can't imagine that unless it's. Well, I guess I can't imagine, I guess I can get some things retail, but by and large, you generally want it transparent, right?
Yeah, I think the specific example was on Snoqualmy Ridge where there was. Some kind of retail services business that had blacked out all their windows and so you can't like see into the. Tenant space at all.
Yeah, the intersection of Center and Kinsey, the two corner retail locations that went in. One of them did like window screening where from the inside they can see out, I think it's perforated. But you can't see in, and so it just creates a blank corner in terms of the pedestrian experience. And then on the other corner is where the urgent care went in. And they.
Yeah.
They also curtained, yeah.
Yeah, good, a good catch on the transparency. So yes, we would like to increase, increase the transparency. Vice Chair Tesman, did you remember what you were gonna say? You're muted.
Yes, I had to get off mute. It was two things, one, just just for staff like. Like we, you pointed out the risk of, you know, eating up the ten percent or whatever. That's that's exactly like, I think we have time to like consider implications like that. And so love it when when you raise those those issues or whatever, because we don't know that. That being said, when I, when I go back and I look at table two, proposed retail use requirements. It says ground floor minimum use, so. I mean, minimum, not maximum, so like we could go to a hundred percent, couldn't we? What am I missing?
I'm sorry, I.
I'm in the, I'm back in the packet on the seventh page, sorry.
The minimum threshold for ground floor retail uses. The minimum threshold for ground floor retail uses?
Yeah, the, the minimum threshold, so ninety percent's the minimum, even if. We make this, the, the shift of all BR two to BR one, including City Hall. It shouldn't be a problem, we'll, we'll hit the ninety percent for sure. It doesn't preclude, is, is there, I don't see something that precludes one hundred percent from being. BR one.
The concern there, I think the director's can, or point there was that, um, incorporating some of these. Incorporating BR two parcels, the BR one zone. AKA the historic district is already right at its, uh, minimum seventy-five percent. Of, uh. Retail businesses, so incorporating more parcels that might change that balance might automatically just. Make it so that there is no long, the, the district is no longer meeting its minimum requirement. That's, so for example, incorporating all of these parcels could result in maybe only.
Fifty-five percent, yeah.
And so then waiting for these businesses to essentially turn over. When, at which point you'll be able to. To apply the retail use requirement, but it would just mean that's just a consequence that could arise. By incorporating parcels such as City Hall, we know that City Hall is never going to be retail use. So, um.
Gotcha, so it's dilution, not maximization we were worried about, the, the, the way that conversation unfolded, I thought we were worried about exceeding. The ninety percent, okay. Is, is dilution something, I, I get it, right, like, if, you're saying it would make a reality where the city. Is. Automatically accepting being out of line with its own code. One, is it necessary, two, is it possible to just have language in this revision? That essentially acknowledges that fact, if we, if we found that we were gonna be below ninety percent, that acknowledges that fact. And outlines like the rationale, I mean, is that even necessary or required or waiver? That make sense?
Yes, and I would say that it, it's not ideal, um, to create non-conforming uses, but it is something that happens. And I think the reality is regardless of how the city acts, whether or not. All of BR two is incorporated or just the parcels along Falls Avenue, I think that there will be some non-conforming. Uses as a result of this change. The, the balance of retail uses in Snow Kwame is just such that. This requirement will create that, those non-conforming uses, and it's just a consequence to be aware of. As we move forward.
Just, just as a comment, at ten thousand feet, there's an aspirational aspect to this. That if we're less than ninety percent, which I think in some cases we are, we'd like to get there. And we gotta do the code that if folks have grandfathered in that they're not there now. That, um, somebody new comes in or they, you know, suddenly this code has a bit more teeth to it. But, um, yeah, I don't. You know, I don't see a problem if, uh, we say, you know what, this is our aspiration, even though we're below where our aspiration is. That this is still what it is, I mean, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't be too worried about. The grade that we would get when we first implement this, because this is, this is what we want, I mean, it's very simple, we want a ninety percent pedestrian. Friendly retail environment.
I hundred percent agree. I, I think that's what we're doing here too, is making it aspirational so that we can move towards it.
Yeah, we just don't want to write something we need, right? Okay, is planning commission given ample feedback on this?
Yes, I think so, I think we've got the, uh, so as part of our prior efforts, we did reach out to all of the property owners. Or the parcels along Falls Avenue, so. We did not receive any, any feedback. It's a result of that outreach, but we will probably conduct a similar effort for the. Other parcels in the BR two zone that we did not reach out to, uh, and we'll make sure that's all included in the. Next summary.
What was the nature of the reach out? I'm amazed you got no comment.
It was, uh, we mailed flyers out, so in addition to the outreach that was performed with the Ridge Merchants and the Downtown. Uh, Merchants Associations, we sent out a flyer to the property owners of all parcels. That would be subject to this, these provisions, and. While at the meetings, we did, um, receive some feedback that was really helpful. And, but we received no feedback whatsoever from any property owner in the city that we reached out to proactively. And that, the, on that flyer, it was a, we provided a summary of the changes that the planning commission had suggested at the May twentieth meeting. Which included the change of from seventy-five percent to ninety percent, a hundred and twenty days to three hundred and sixty-five days. And also expanding it to apply to new parcels, and we didn't receive any feedback.
Okay. Okay.
So moving through the recommendation, it sounds like we are still. Still okay with the ninety percent and the three hundred and sixty-five days. We added language that would require the vacant space, uh, be advertised online in order to qualify. For a retail use waiver application. Um, we expanded the ninety percent, or well, the retail use requirement to expand, to, uh, apply to all storefronts facing Center Boulevard. Southeast and Snow Kwame Ridge. And just as a qualifier there, we already did the public hearing with the planning commission for the. Uh, amendments to the mixed use final plan that would allow those changes to be made. So I did not include them in this staff report, um, but I just want to remind the commission that. Uh, those changes will only be possible if. If, uh, the city council approves also the mixed use final plan. Amendments that we've discussed.
Uh, Senator Leeson, is, is the council or committees been informed of what's brewing here? There, there, where was going on, right?
We staff, so it looks like, yes, um, staff hasn't presented anything to them along these lines in such specificity. Because we've been waiting to move forward just as a bundle with the amendments to mixed use final plan, and then also these proposed changes. And then, so, uh, we will update the text to require seventy percent. We'll do some research and see what, what other cities are doing and, um, try to hit this target of seventy percent. Minimum open, when, opening for windows in the retail district. Assuming that is acceptable to the commission.
We say seventy, seventy-five. Mr. Cookup, what'd you say?
I think I actually said seventy to seventy-five, so I kinda left it open. I, I would be fine with either.
In her mind, she said a hundred.
No, I mean, in fairness, I've been on the architecture side of trying to design to these, and it, it is challenging. So I, I also understand that, but it's important for that sense of community, so.
The, uh, last item that we had discussed at the May twentieth meeting. Uh, was the approval process for retail waivers, so, uh, previously. We had suggested that the CD committee would be the approving body with appeals going to the city council. However, on the advice of the city attorney, we've actually revised that in the strike through to reflect a process. Where, uh, the planning commission is the retail waiver approving body and with all. All appeals going to the hearing examiner.
Just out of curiosity, why? What, why, was it due to input from the, only from the attorney?
From the city attorney.
Cause the city committee to council, I thought would have been. Uh, the thought was to get the elected officials. You know, directly involved, I mean. Anyway, go ahead.
Uh, it, it wasn't just from the city attorney, it was, uh, just a more thought out discussion between. The community development director, myself, and the city attorney, allowing for an opportunity for an appeal process to take forward without going to the council. So in this kind of situation, it keeps it, you know, in a legislative, quasi judicial situation, but then it could go to the hearing examiner. Somebody wanted to appeal, so. Just allowing that, 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 that. Um, opportunity to have this, uh, uh, appeal process vetted out through an independent hearing examiner.
Right, but this is for a waiver for. The three sixty-five, I thought somebody from the, at least at the committee level would wanna be involved with that. And then not just a planning commission here, except, so, so basically, basically, I mean, you could run this of different plan commission, obviously not us, right? Different plan commission, five years from now, says, you know what, put in a medical office here is great, uh, you, you waited long enough. We go ahead and waive this. Uh, or we don't waive this, then they appeal it, the hearing examiner makes a decision, and something happens. That the committees and the council members are like, I don't like this. But did, did that make sense just now? So, so why, why not at least have?
I think that's, this process is also, uh, for an application of this nature, it is somewhat, um, more in line with the development. The current categories of development review. Just given like the, what would be typical for a typical threshold of review for. This type of application, and, uh, I think that's part of the reason for the recommendation.
Councilor Johnson?
This is the retail waiver, right?
Yes.
Talking about, okay. Yeah, I guess my concern with the, uh, so. The waiver goes to planning commission, and it goes to hearing examiner, and the hearing examiner, is that still the, uh, creative development director? Independent one, okay. This, this helpful, right, the, that's a little bit off to think about a little bit further than.
So you're saying the code would be written so clear that it would be utterly quasi judicial, that's basically what you're saying.
And the.
Not, not be a. You know, back and forth debate or what you call it, that basically, either the waiver gets approved, we say, no, we don't think we should. And they appeal it, and then nobody in the city, including the plan commission at that point, would adjudicate it, it would be the hearing examiner.
Yeah, I mean, to, an appeal like that could still be. A decision of that nature could still be appealed under Lupa, uh, but that would be, that would be. I would think that would be somewhat uncommon for a decision of this nature, unless it was like a really high profile case, maybe. But yes, the hearing examiner ultimately would be the one. Evaluating the record that the planning commission establishes and. Either affirming or. Affirming their decision or, uh, choosing tact contrary.
I, I, I don't like that, I mean, I, I don't like it, I mean, before we had a. Basically, it doesn't matter, my commissioner, I mean, it doesn't matter, I mean, it says no, and then it goes to the council, so you've got. The elected officials saying, gee whiz, are we gonna change something, are we gonna allow a waiver? Now we're saying it will go to a commission. Moment is possible, commission say no, then it goes to a third party examiner. Who, who could make a judgment, with only input from the elected officials that maybe counter to the whole intended, I, I don't like it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think that's an understandable reaction, I would just say there are. Certain processes in the city where this is already the case, so it's not something that's, um, unprecedented. So, for example, historic design review is, um. One example where this process is already established, where the planning commission is the deciding body, and then the hearing examiner. Um, has a closed record review, a closed record hearing based on the record that's established during the planning commissions.
I hear what you're saying, that's very different though, of whether, you know, full brick on a brewery is the same as, you know, do we put a. Uh, non-retail use in the middle of center, or in the middle of a railroad that nobody wants, I think those are very different things.
That's true, but the, it's the process that's important in that instance, so. The hearing examiner isn't going to be making a decision based on any new information. Um, or any new testimony, that's the nature of a closed record hearing, so they will just be reviewing. What has been stated by the planning commissioners and then the applicant for the retail use waiver during the planning commission's hearing on the. Application, and then based on their review of what the testimony. What testimony was given by all parties, and then their evaluation on whether or not you acted consistent with the municipal code and what's required. They would. Firm or like deny your decision.
Still like it. First of all, sir, customer, Johnson?
So I wanna kinda say back what I thought you said, and then. So I remember, um, a while back, uh, there was a project called Rails that. Processed the, uh, planning commission, uh, one of the first things they did, uh, after I left the commission was, uh, they approved the project. Uh, it's quasi judicial.
Yeah, with a caveat, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, right, uh, but in general, yeah, approve the project, um, and, uh, that was quasi judicial, so yeah, your code, yeah, your proposal. And it's okay, if they match, more or less, and then, uh, that was appealed to the council and what we did as. The appeal body, whatever you wanna call that. Then, uh, what we could do is only look at what happened at the planning commission meeting, and effectively our decision was. Did the planning commission clearly do anything wrong? And if they did, then we could overrule their decision, but if the planning commission didn't clearly do something wrong. Then we had to approve it, that was the obligation, we couldn't say, well, they, we disagree with them on this part, right? Um, i- is that effectively how this would work, the hearing examiner, examiner would not be going back to, okay, I don't care what the planning commission did. Let's just look at all the facts with square one, it would be, what happened at the planning commission, what does the proposal say, what's code say? And what happened to the planning mission, did the planning mission make a mistake, is that effectively how it works?
Wow, did we do something wrong with the rails? I wasn't aware of that.
No, 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 I'm just saying that was the process, because, uh, we affirmed the planning commission's, uh, decision.
But, I, I'm still, I mean.
So, that, that, so the council, uh, sorry to catch you off, chair, all, all of me.
Well, well, no, but, but I think it's a little bit different what you're saying, I mean. In this case, the appeal would happen if we're trying to uphold the code, right, so somebody's at three hundred and sixty-six days. It says, I really wanna put this in what you have as a retail pedestrian friendly area, and we say, no, you know, we do, we do not agree to this waiver. Because it would be really bad for the city, for, for reasons that, you know, objective, code related, and even personal, I mean, there'd be a whole lot of reasons in there, right? And at that point, the hearing examiner would look at the code, look at the days, and. I, I could see in adjudication where we would wind up with something in the city, in the core of the city, that we all hate, and to me, that's, that's. That's not the way the system's supposed to work. Does that make sense?
I think that's, yeah, that's fair, and it's, I mean, as long, but I would say as long as the planning commission is acting within the limits of its authority. It, that's not, and like appropriately evaluating and administering the. The code. I don't think that's a concern that the planning commission should have.
Let, let me understand the three sixty-five days then, the three sixty-five days, after they've tried really hard, they request a waiver. But the planning commission doesn't have to say it's okay, or whoever the governing body is, right, we could say the waiver is denied. Because this is an important part of the city, therefore we still want it to be retail.
I, I thought the community development director was the authority.
Well, they're gonna.
I, I didn't even think it would come to us.
Under the current, currently proposed language, the, uh, planning commission would be the decision-making body.
And it used to be the community developer, it is right now, right?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
That's what I was gonna say, yeah, but now it's the development director, uh, but this language is intended to change that due to things that.
But again, at ten thousand feet, we would like more retail space, more pedestrian friendly, and we would like, um, some teeth into what we're putting in. To, to make that happen, can I see the potential of a hearing examiner perhaps taking some of that away? I mean, if they appeal to the council, what, what is the problem going on with council, the council can look at everything the population said. They still can hear all the things, and yet there's still elected officials looking at that. The council can look at everything the planning commission said. They still can hear all the things, and yet there's still elected officials looking at that, you know, section on railroad that used to always be historic and say, do I really want that there? I mean, I think that's an important piece that a hearing examiner just wouldn't provide. Anyway, I, I request, I guess we could go down this path a long time. I'd request that we relook that. Because I think the appeal should be to somebody elected within the city or a commissioner, a commission. I don't think it should be an examiner. Because I think it's beyond quasi judicial.
Yeah, I will make a note that we will take another look at that.
Any, any comments from the commission on this? Am I grabbing a, something you think is not relevant or what?
No, no, you, I think you make a good point. You, you just want, you just want decision making attuned to the desires of the city to be involved in that process. And that makes sense to my mind.
Makes sense to me too.
Okay. So there's the commission, say with confidence, I'm seeing that Commissioner Cronot as well, would like to revisit.
Not a new battle. Not even a battle.
Yeah, to revisit that.
Okay. We'll take another look at that. So that's the, we've so just to recap, for the next meeting where this is reviewed, tentatively, we're hoping that will be a public hearing where we can, where we can satisfy that requirement and have finalized language. And if it's acceptable to the commission, they would, they could make a recommendation to city council. That language will be modified from what we've shown you today to expand the retail overlay zone to include all BR two zones or all of the BR two zone within the city. Ninety percent ground floor retail requirement, three hundred and sixty five day vacancy period in order to qualify for a retail waiver application. The advertising requirements, including storefronts along Center Boulevard and seventy to seventy five percent openings on windows for ground floor retail spaces. And we will look at language that where the appeal should be to an elected official within the city.
And I, I'm not sure we're going to be ready for a public hearing. I think we need to see the language before we do a public hearing. Because there's, there's a whole lot of moving parts here.
Yeah.
So I think we just ought to see the language, digest it, and then I think we'll be a bit ready for the public hearing.
Okay.
Okay. And there is, I would, just for the planning commissioners, if you haven't seen it, so August nineteenth meeting is canceled because of available and whatnot last, last couple of weeks for vacation, I guess. So we'll have our first of Tuesday after Labor Day, right? Third of September, and it will not be here. It's going to be upstairs in the conference room. And we'll go ahead and have a little bit more intimate setting to, to cover the language. Go over that if you're on, you know, Zoom, that won't be a problem. We'll go over it. And then I think we'll be ready for the public hearing, the third week of September.
Okay.
Okay. Good.
Thank you very much for your time.
Good. Wow. Okay. Nothing controversial about that at all. Good. It, it's good to see passion around this. So it's really good to see that. So now we move on to the historic training. So we have twenty minutes left? Okay.
All right, hello commissioners. This will just be twenty minutes to finish out the video.
So to this group goes the honor of the largest digly output of logs in the state of Washington. Camp B, Snoqualmie Falls Lumber Company, July eleventh, nineteen eighteen. So people wanted these jobs bad because you got paid the difference between what a normal mill worker in the woods would get and your army pay. So people lied about their mill and woods experience to get into the mill and woods under the spruce production board. And we actually had to send the mill management folks down to Camp Lewis to interview soldiers to make sure that they had the right experience. Springboard needed to get you above the thickest part of a tree and get you above where it was tough because the wind whipped the tree and this became tougher down here. And then that's where the pitch tended to be. So that's why we had those early tall stumps. Now, this, this one, this, this is by far the biggest spruce log I've ever seen in my life. Imagine how many airplanes you could make out of that. The spruce is very strong, very light, and very clear. So there's Mitty Tarhoun leaning out the cab. This is a normal, there were six big steam locomotives in the railroad for logging for the Snoqualmie Falls Lumber Company. And Mitty is, is the father of the hop ranch manager we saw earlier. So this is the last load of logs coming out of the woods by train. Now, why was it the last load? Because trucks were more efficient. Now, most everybody has seen these trucks before, whether you recognize them or not. They, they are on the side of a building painted down in Snoqualmie. And I gave the artist this black and white. He came back to me and said, I'm doing it in color. What color were they? So I went to my good friend who was probably about ninety three or ninety four then. Gloria McNeely and Gloria's husband drove the yellow truck on the right and remembered the colors of the other two trucks. Her memory is still incredible and she's now a hundred and one. So this is a fun picture because action of logs into the mill pond. And then if you could blow this up, you could see the, a lot of the town is on the hill behind this picture. Mill one in the foreground and Mill two in the background. Now, the burner went away in forty six and the second stack on the right was built in forty four. Knowing these things, it makes it easier to date some of these pictures. Oh, this is wonderful. And at schools, the kids just love this picture. The bolt chain, right in the middle there, pulls the logs into the mill. But the diameter of this log is such that it, the bolt chain was slipping and wouldn't do the job. So these folks are not attempting to push that log into the mill like it looks they are. It, they're going to put that wire rope around the end of the log and hook it to the bolt chain in the mill. And that will then pull the log in. That's about as big a log as they were able to cut. Here's a ten foot six on an eleven foot bandsaw. This is prior to hard hats. Notice the saw is that dark black band between the two gentlemen on the right. That's the actual bandsaw. Here is a nineteen nineteen picture of that bandsaw. So there's a huge mill wheel up there and another one below the floor, one of those mill wheels. Perhaps this one is on display at River and Railroad in downtown Snoqualmie. The steam, steam drove that carriage at a pretty good pace. Electric chainsaws first came to the woods in nineteen thirty eight, gas in nineteen forty three. That's Conal Pike Fury, my uncle on the right. His mother was the little girl without any shoes on in the school picture. And that's Lars Olthang on the left. This is an electric, you can see the electric car cord on the left. These were not very well insulated. So you got shocked when you were using them. You know, nothing dangerous, but maybe a little uncomfortable. Mill number one burner was no longer needed in nineteen forty six. The entire valley was on the hill above the mill, watching this get blasted. It was a big deal. The town of Snoqualmie Falls disappears. My hometown disappears. By the mid nineteen fifties, the need for the company, a company town had diminished considerably. People had their own automobiles. The reason for building the town in the first place was that a common individual did not have an automobile to bring themselves to work. Folks wanted equity in their homes, so that was very important. And the maintenance and taxes were increasing for warehouser on these older homes. Finally, in nineteen fifty eight, the bulk of the remaining homes were moved over a temporary bridge to become the Williams addition to Snoqualmie, which has never been annexed to Snoqualmie. The mill continued on as the primary employer for the Snoqualmie Valley. And in fact, a huge plywood plant was opened at Snoqualmie in nineteen fifty nine. I was nineteen, but I was interested enough in local history and living in Seattle. But I bought the valley record that, that they put out to announce the opening of the plywood plant. It was a valley record rolled up this big, as big as a Seattle Times Sunday newspaper back then, full of the history of the valley and the mill. The town of Snoqualmie Falls moves to the Williams addition in Snoqualmie nineteen fifty eight over a temporary bridge. So if you go down on River Street, past the hardware store to the river, that's where this bridge was. Now, it's fascinating. People left their, their material goods in the houses. So they jacked the house up, put it on the truck, took it and its furnishings over and plopped it down in the new lot. So except that there are wonderful stories about people nailing the, the console black and white TVs to the floor to make sure they wouldn't get hurt. The teens in World War One. They were out of the mill story down, looking at the town again. Pre-World War One, Snoqualmie was a quiet town in transition. The Meadowbrook Farm Dairy Operation did not create the job opportunities or require the seasonal influx of employees, of workers that the hop ranch had needed. Logging was increasing, but there were no large mills and valley logs were generally processed elsewhere, including being successfully sent over Snoqualmie Falls and picked up below the falls and taken down to mills lower. But World War One and the new Snoqualmie Falls Lumber Company mill finally brought prosperity. First cars in town. So Si Summers won. This was a little contest. I had a, a, a group of older church members for a church history committee for five years. And these folks were full of pictures and magic stuff. And so they had a little challenge over who the very first person to have a car in the town of Snoqualmie was in Si One. And Otto Reining was second. The Methodist Church, the Kinsey Homes, and the Vaughn School nineteen ten. So the current Methodist church is on that same footprint, although it's not the same building. The Vaughn School, it's a crazy issue. It's called the Vaughn School because it was the Snoqualmie Elementary, it was the Snoqualmie School. And then Snoqualmie sold it to the Vaughn family and from that point on, it became known as the Vaughn School. Snoqualmie Street Scene nineteen eleven. Notice that wonderful fancy stuff on the top of the railroad depot? We don't know whether it was cast iron or what, but, and, and everybody would love to put that back on. So if you have spare change and want to offer your money, I'm sure that the, there's always something more important that the railroad has to spend its money on, but it would be wonderful to have that filigree back on. Team hauling wood on Railroad Avenue circa nineteen ten. Look at that. It's just wonderful. Main Street nineteen thirteen. The prosperous twenties. And the twenties were a great time in Snoqualmie. Automobiles became the normal mode of transportation. The livery stable made the transition to automobiles. And finally, to the brick storefronts that we know as what? The candy factory? And there's a, a drugstore. A few brick bank, the, the new brick bank building was built in nineteen twenty three. At the Snoqualmie Falls Lumber Company mill, a new community hallway MCA was dedicated and a sustained yield policy guaranteed the forests would be replanted after harvest. This was incredibly forward looking, very early for that to be done. The town of Meadowbrook was planted. The Brook Theater opened in Meadowbrook in nineteen twenty three and transitioned to Takis in nineteen twenty nine. And then the Great Depression hit. Main Street in twenty nine. Bank building built in twenty three. Became the headquarters for Washington State Bank that a local banker owned seven banks on the east side, including Bellevue. Town of Meadowbrook, Brook Theater and the HK Allman Drugstore. So now all of you folks on the ridge know where the Allman street name came from. So he was the druggist in Meadowbrook and he lost a daughter to polio. We had some polio issues.
Here are the top five reasons you should consider adding a tumbler rolling sharpener to your kitchen tools. Unlike other sharpeners that take time to practice, the.
The nineteen thirties were tough times in the valley. The SR two oh two bridge at Snoqualmie Falls wooden pilings burned and it fell into the river on December fourteenth nineteen thirty three. Why is this a big deal? It's as if we lost a major bridge on I ninety. This two oh two through Snoqualmie was the major northern tier east west highway in the United States. So the bypass was to, to use Mill Pond Road, which was flooding. So it was a tough time. Movie ticket sales dropped. The lowest being, sales being in nineteen thirty two. I know this because I ended up with the corporate books of that theater and was able to map all of the, the ticket sales. And, and I could prove that the worst year for the valley for the Great Depression was thirty two. Silent movie theaters closed in Snoqualmie and North Bend. That's Snoqualmie Falls Lumber Company mill. Mill workers went to a four day work week with a ten percent cut in wages, twelve and a half percent for management. The mill managed to stay open. Then World War Two came to Europe and mill production picked up for the war effort. Oh, this is priceless. This is the twenty millionth Ford that ever came off the production line. So Henry Ford was not just a good engineer, he was. So Henry Ford was not just a good engineer. He was in a, he was a classic PR man. And so the 20 millionth Ford went all over the United States. And there was a big Ford dealer right across the street from the Methodist Church. Now, that that Methodist Church went through a fire in 39. But the current one is on the same footprint, so you can tell where this picture was taken. Oil truck hits bridge on December 14th, 1933, wooden pilings burned. Excuse me. Unfortunately, it was flooding season, and you can see the stuff stacking up against the steel girders. So the county had hoped they'd be able to just pop it back up. The flood pushed it parallel with the far side, and they had to blast this part of the bridge out to rebuild the new one. Recovery from the Great Depression was well on its way when World War Two hit. All local Japanese workers and families were interned. The Snoqualmie Falls Lumber Company Mill went to a 48-hour work week. Gas rationing made the walk to work ways of the Great Depression the norm again. Folks in Snoqualmie could walk over the bridge, that is now the Snoqualmie Valley Trail Bridge, that went directly into the mill. Women once again entered the workforce in non-traditional jobs, and a civil defense airplane watch was initiated in a shack atop City Hall. For the entire duration of the war. Snoqualmie bypassed. The most impactful local change of the 40s came in 1942. The new cross-state highway, US 10, was opened. This included the new floating bridge over Lake Washington. It also meant that Fall City and Snoqualmie were no longer on the primary highway to the east. This was very hard on tourists oriented oriented infrastructure. North Bend was not affected by this bypass. Women in the mill, World War Two first shift, 1943. Main Street, 1941, that's City Hall right in the middle. That's now Minions. Note flag, air raid siren, and spotter shack on City Hall. That's not the current air raid siren that's on top of Minions. That's a later model. But, you know, this was serious for the war, and here is the airplane spotter shack. That was on top of City Hall. So these folks were volunteers who were trained to be able to identify aircraft. And scan the skies all day. The 1950s were good times, even with the Highway 10, now I-90 bypassed. And in 1952, the town of Meadowbrook was annexed to the town of Snoqualmie. In 1958, as we've heard, people bought mill houses, small for $100 and large for $150. And moved them out of the town of Snoqualmie Falls over a temporary bridge into the town of Snoqualmie. And I've actually seen the contracts for, I have scanned a contract for $100 house and for $150 house. And that, you know, this is wonderful, except that you had to find a lot that would perk, and you had had water and electricity. And build a foundation. So it was, it was still a challenge. In August of 1959, a huge new plywood plant opened at the Warehouser Mill. So that's the beginning of where we are, and let's see. My name is David Battie, and if you would like to ask me a historic question. My email address is D A V E.
Is that email still valid, do we have? Be interesting to make an addition with that to include the. SR1, SR2 builds, right? Because that, it was Snoqualmie became the fastest growing city in Washington for a few years. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Items of planning chemistry interest. I'll do a quick poll. Camera on here. So Vice Chair Tesman?
Nothing for me, Chair, thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I'm not, not an item, but just wanted to call out with the Labor Day holiday coming up for the next meeting. Unfortunately, on Tuesdays, Tuesdays and Thursdays, I have conflicts, so I won't be able to participate in that one.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Okay. Commissioner Kilkup?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Crone?
Just to thank you to the staff, Mr. Levin's Community Development Director for fielding all the questions we got today. Good stuff.
Agreed, agreed.
Agreed.
I have nothing else, and I do agree with your sentiments. So let's go ahead and move on to the future agenda list and work program.
Sorry, so this is the current list. Some changes were discussed today during the meeting, so it is already out of date.
Yeah, yeah, so we're going to do the NF, MUFP.
Yeah, so I believe what I heard was review September 3rd.
Right.
And then do a public hearing on the 16th. Yes, okay.
And then we're going to do climate change on the 7th and 21st.
That is tentatively scheduled. I am not sure. Are you still? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We. We have a label for October 7th and 21st.
Okay. All right, then the work program?
No changes have been made, just still included.
Snoqualmie Mill design standards, is that out there anywhere? Is it?
For those who didn't hear online, we're probably going to shift that to 2025.
Okay. Okay. Any questions from the commissioners? See nothing? Okay, thank you. At this point, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. During the meeting, I get a second?
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Meeting is adjourned at 8:40 PM. August 5th, 2024. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.